Hey, we call a regular city council meeting on July 5th at 7:00 PM to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones.
Here.
That's a form of counsel.
Okay, propose a regular agenda. Motion to approve.
So, move second.
I need a motion to amend the agenda. Okay. And I'm thinking about putting item 18 on council action until they can city council seat perhaps in front of ordinance's resolutions right after correspondence. My thought was if we realize we're gonna elect somebody that may not be here, but if they are here, we might as well have them participate in the meeting. Is there a second for that?
I guess I'll second.
Yeah, like five seconds.
Kinsman moved and seconded, make that a motion, Tom? No, I think that's, if we're gonna elect somebody, let's put them on where they can participate. If it happens to be somebody that's not attending the meeting, then that's, that's fine. See how it works out.
Possible?
Yeah, I can ask the court.
I think it's okay. I, I don't know if all the people whose names are in prepared for the meeting, so I don't know if it would be fair to put them in a tough situation maybe. Not wanting to say no, yet not having read the packet, I'm not sure. I think you're, you're fine to do it and maybe give the person the opportunity to come up to the table then or wait till next meeting.
Any, any other comments? Yes, Councilor Schaefer.
Yeah, I guess I think it makes more sense to wait till the next meeting so that they have time to prepare and like learn the, you know, read the packet, ask questions, get information. And yeah, I just think that makes the most sense.
Well, if they've read the packet and if they are up to speed, then, and if they're not, they can say, what is it, do you want to say you don't vote, you just pack off?
Well, we can abstain though.
Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, let's take a vote on the, all in favor of the amendment to move item 18 to 14 E or whatever you wanna call it there right under L.
If we move it, we're not necessarily saying they'll start with moving it.
All we're doing is moving the item on the agenda at this point in time. We're not supporting any candidate or anything like that. We're just moving the item on the agenda. So, that's the amended, or amendment to move item 18. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close. So, item 18 is now first item under L. Any other questions, comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries. Okay, disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Hearing none then, communications by visitors and visitors. We have some guest speakers tonight, Sheridan Alpine Association, 2023, 2022, 23 season summary presentation by, is that a paper, do you want it?
Oh, the court card? Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you again for having us. Two years in a row, we can get credit for that, right?
Yes. Actually, I think it's in the MOU.
Yeah.
I think you get credit on being approved on it.
Very good, very good, so note it. Okay, so we put together a season summary to present and I tried to limit the presentation to 10 slides because I know how valuable council's time is. And I like to talk too much and so it'll probably go on longer than what I really wanted to go anyway, but hopefully there's some good questions. You'll see that I've got lots of photos. The ski hill is very close, but none of the, all of us get up there all the time, so, and we miss things, so I thought pictures would be real helpful. The first four slides are a summary or some photos of the city-owned chairlift cable replacement project. And you'll remember that was a partnership between the city of Cordova and Sheridan Alpine Association. The project was about $140,000 and the city contributed about $83,000 into it and Sheridan Alpine Association picked up the rest. I'm gonna have Paul go first as far as the first four, describing the first four slides and then I'll jump in for the season summary, so.
Paul? Okay, this is the first slide and the slide on the left shows the gentleman we hired from, he's from Missouri and he's an expert splicer. And that is a picture of splicing the old cable to the new cable. So, we were able to run the chairlift and drag the new cable up around the top station and back down and then splice the two ends of the new cable together. And then on the right, you see this pool that the new cable came on and it came from Switzerland. It took two years to get here. It's inch and an eighth diameter and it's approximately mile and a half long and weighed about 15,000 pounds. So, it was kind of a big deal to get it. Pandemic screwed us up a little bit, but it got here. Then that gentleman with his arm up in the air in the slide on the right, he came from Canmore, B.C. and he's an expert on rigging and he travels all over the world rigging chairlift cables and doing stuff like that and also splicing. But the main splicer is this old timer from Missouri and he was quite a character to work with. So, this next slide.
I think you're just gonna have to scroll up.
Scroll up.
Oh, did you get it?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's.
How did you do that?
I don't know.
Okay, the slide on the left shows, uh-oh.
Now, I'm, I'm learning, look how fast I can. Usually I do page up, but it doesn't work. How about that one?
Well, okay, that's, that's a closer of dealing with the core because the cable has metal strands and then that's wrapped around a synthetic core. And it used to be organic core made out of some kind of like manila rope, but now they've gone to a plastic core, which is gonna help us, we won't have to lubricate the cable as much. And then initially, and on the right, that's the old cable hooked to a front-end loader being drug back around before we could splice them together. I've got another slide. Okay, now the slide on the left is a picture of a boom truck holding up our concrete counterbalance. And what that does is if there's, if there's a shock on the line, like for instance, we had to make an emergency stop, well, the, the whole, the whole cable with the people on it is gonna bounce. And if it was just hardwired all the way around, something would fail. So, that counterbalance is hooked to a carriage and you see that on the right of, of the big block of concrete and that slides back and forth and it gives, allows give in the system. And the reason, the main reason we had to replace the cable was that counterbalance, that cable has stretched so much that that counterbalance was too close to the ground. And so, if there was a shock, an emergency stop, we call it an emergency stop, counterbalance would go up as, as the shock hit, but then when it came back down, it would hit the ground. The cable would go slack and it would potentially derail. So, it was definitely time to replace the old cable. It had stretched beyond the limits. And then the picture on the right, the gentleman from, I forgot his name, I apologize, but from Missouri, he's got these lead hammers and once he, he wove the two ends of the cable together, he's hitting the strands to tuck them in and make it just invisible. You can't see where the splice is. I have another one.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Perfect. Any questions before we move on? Okay. I don't know what it is. Technical difficulties. All right, the next slide is our, the start of our season summary. There was quite a bit of freak out going on in, in November and early December as we had no snow and we were waiting for it to get cold enough to, to start the snowmaking device. Finally, we were able to get enough snow on the ground that we opened the rope tow December 15th and we had 52 operational days of the rope, of the rope tow. The lift opened on February 8th. We had 28 operational days and then the last day was April 2nd and with that about approximately four months of service. The picture on the left is a great shot of a very busy day and most, most of the lift days are, are that busy. You can see the parking lot is, is, is full. Outside of the shot, you, you'll see cars going all the way down the ski hill. Parking is becoming an issue if we need to, we probably need to think about expanding the parking lot and making it a little bit safer. The part, the cars that are parked down the hill and those skiers trying to hike up in their ski boots is problematic, so that'd be a spot to identify for some improvements. You can see the, the rope tow is, is full of skiers and the lift has a line going halfway up the bunny hill and two big piles of, of snow from the snowmaking and, and I guess maybe the, the beginning of our terrain park. The photos today are from Penny Johnson and we smile very much at Penny. She got in all 28 lift days. You probably saw her on, on Facebook. She was logging it, so she got every single one of them. So, I don't know if there's too many people that did that, but, but we thank her for her, her great photography and, and sharing so that we could make the presentation today. Our operational highlights, we didn't have any lost days due to any mechanical or weather stand downs. Weather stand downs are basically when we start the lift and then the weather doesn't cooperate and we have to shut down early. So, we, we take startup very seriously and, and it's within our operational plan, it's, it's three people that make that decision to, to give the announcement that will be open very opportunistically. On the left-hand side, I love looking at that because we've got boarders and skiers and just about every chair full going up and on the right, lots of skiers going down, down the hill. Dave Branchaw is, is out fishing right now in between. He wanted me to make sure that I let you know that he, he put in 375 hours of trail grooming with our one little piston bully groomer. In addition, he hit the cross-country trail quite often to expand that. That's not in our scope of work, but definitely something that we're encouraged, encouraging and want to help support. This was the third year of our $20,000 investment into rental equipment. So, we rent snowboards, skis, boots, poles, helmets, total of $78,000 over the last five years we've got invested in. And now we're pretty much, we're at the point of our inventory that we want to be and so now it's just gonna be an annual maintenance replacement. One of the things to highlight there with our rental equipment, rather than renting equipment daily, we're renting equipment for the whole season. That kinda, that came out of the COVID pandemic and it's worked really well and it's been very popular. So, the families really enjoy it and it helps get the kids up on the hill. Jim Fritsch gave a chairlift safety presentation at a Mount Echols Elementary School Assembly. We heard from the parents that they, a lot of the kids needed some, some training or some awareness and so we responded with that. And I was, I was really surprised and impressed on how quickly Jim Fritsch answered that call. Within three days, he was at the Wednesday morning assembly and giving a presentation about how the chairlift works and what happens if the chairlift stops. And, and we went into some evacuation drills as well and I think that, that answered the call real well. We also did three chairlift evacuation deals, drills, and I don't know if, if you're familiar with that or not, but the next slide basically is an example of, of an evacuation. You can see that's the hidden tower, so that's, that's the real, it's the lowest, I don't know if it is the lowest, but it's one of the low chairlifts. So, we can actually get an extension ladder hooked onto the cable there. On the other, other higher spots, it's actually a rope that goes over that has a, a seat on it that the, the skier can get onto. And Paul's the expert on this, so jump in if, if. Yeah, so you can see it, it takes quite a few people on the ground controlling the chair, controlling the, the ladder and stabilizing everything. The next series is that one of our ski patrollers will go up and help the skier remove their skis and then hand those skis down and then get the, the skier to the extension ladder and come down. This one is a nice sunny day and a nice easy example. They're not always like that, but, but we do do the training and we have excellent volunteers that, that do a lot of good work in ski patrol and, and keep, keep the hill safe and all the skiers and boarders safe. The chairlift maintenance highlights, the annual maintenance typical, it was a fairly typical repair and maintenance needs year. Dave replaced five sheaves, greased the entire lift six times and replaced the lift auxiliary system, which is the hydraulic pump tubing and valves and it's, that goes out every once in a while, so we just need to, need to repair and replace those, remove and replace those. I think everybody around the table is familiar that this, this chairlift has roots in Sun Valley. It was actually installed in Sun Valley in 1939, moved to Cordova and was installed here in, we think, 73. If it is really 73, it's gonna be 50 years this year. And speaking with Ms. Sherman earlier today, the highlights, I think maybe for some opportunity to put this on some sort of historical registry or make our own registry or somehow would be good to kind of highlight the, the vintage and the, the history behind it. We have quite a few tourist skiers that want to come and, and ski on, on our hill and so there's also some tourist opportunities there. And I'm sure some of these cruise boat visitors would love a ride up there on a beautiful day like today to get the, get the view. Not every day is like today, but, but it, it would have been beautiful today. You can see the pictures down below, you've got the Sunshine Girls there with the yellow. That was on the last day of the, of the, of our lift day and another good shot at Midway with lots of snows. Lots of smiles. I don't ever really see anybody not smiling on the ski hill. This slide highlights the letter that the Sheridan Alpine Association sent to the city count, mayor and city council back in March. We haven't heard anything, so I kinda wanted to just include it in the presentation. It's maybe an outstanding thing, maybe to talk about or, or, or work on. Basically, the, the question was coming is to us is what, what are the major maintenance needs coming up? And it was something we talked about last year during our report is that we would try to, as, as the operators, try to help the city identify what the deferred maintenance needs and maybe what the annual maintenance needs are. As you know, the city contributes the annual maintenance needs about approximately $15,000 each year to, to keep up with the annual maintenance, but these are larger items. So, the, the cable replacement project was one. Next on the list is, is tower painting, so I wanna talk a little bit about that. And then safety maintenance ladders and work platforms. And so, I, I picked out a couple photos that kinda show what, what maybe the issue is. I don't know, it's, it's hard for me to, to say, but it's so bright in here because of the sun, you can't maybe see the, the coloration, but the, the base coat or the primer coat is that orangish reddish color and then the black is the top coat. There is some rust, but not a lot of rust. What we see is mostly that primer coat, which tells us that we need to get on the painting. And again, this June was so rainy, it reminded me that really the, the best way to do this is, is going to be to encapsulate those towers with plastic and so that you can paint no matter what, what the, the rain is going to do to them. But it's gonna be very expensive. Our, our estimate, that's probably old at this point, it's two years old, was somewhere in the range of $450,000. That's a, a big bite out of an apple, budget apple, so I would think maybe phasing something into that would probably, a phased project would be the, the right approach there. The safety maintenance ladders and work platforms is something that the Sheridan Alpine Association has struggled with in regards to operating and maintaining the, the chairlift for the city. As you can see on the, the photo on the right, we've got guys that are, that are good climbers that climbed up the, the tower with its framework. They have fall arresting gear on, but they're leaning out and, and trying to take care of those, those wheels and, and grease them and replace them and do all that kinda stuff. If, if you're at a major ski resort, you'll see that there's ladders on every one of them and there's good work platforms so that, so that maintenance can be done. We have looked into some work platforms and some, some, some ladders and that's a fairly good quote of about $180,000 to get, get access ladders and work platforms for, for all of the, all of the towers. The association has designated Dave Branchaw, myself, Paul Schwartzbart as our infrastructure court, project coordination team. So, we stand ready to, to help the city scope out and, and plan, plan a project. Let us know. And then my final slide, which is kind of a, a really cool photo where the, the chairlift is above the fog and skiers are going up and actually it's a nice day up there and you wouldn't know it maybe down, down in the city, so. With that, I'll end and if there's any questions, happy to, happy to answer them.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Casey?
So, maybe a couple points here. You mentioned summer access and for various reasons why it doesn't happen, you're here. Why don't we have summer access?
Right now, it's based on the, on the agreement with the Sheridan Alpine Association. It's just for skiing and, and winter activities. I think, yeah, in thinking about how nice that was or how nice it was today, it made, made me think that summer activity would be something that we would be interested in trying to do, especially as I mentioned earlier with the cruise ship visitors, maybe doing something like they do in Juneau, getting them up the hill and showing them around. I think the walking tour is nice, but if they had a destination and could go, could go up on the hill fairly easy, I think that might be something we'd be interested in looking at and assisting the city with.
I mean, and it would ultimately bring revenue, correct? And that's, we're talking about expensive things that need to happen.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you'd have to, we have to talk about the.
Absolutely.
Fee structure, right? Yeah. But yeah, I think that would bring city, bring some money into the city or to the association or however we structure them.
Is there, and speaking of that tourist opportunities, I think I, as I've done some research, I've realized that, and correct me, you guys would know more than me, but what I've been able to research is we're one of five ski lifts in all of the state of Alaska.
Well.
Six resorts and five ski lifts, chair, actual chairlifts?
Well, Alyeska has five itself, just Alyeska.
Sure, but in, in terms of resort and?
Yeah, the resort, there's Girdwood, there's two in Fairbanks, there's a new one called Ski Talk outside at Hatri Pass. There's, Juneau has a ski area, so that's pretty much it.
Fantastic. So, what I'm just getting at is there's some opportunities that we can.
Oh, absolutely.
Other self, maybe a partnership with Chamber or other organizations to maybe get us on the map. I know our, our season's a little more volatile and some of those other larger places just with our proximity to the coast, but just not between them. Again, how can we bring a little more revenue in to help maintain some of our stuff? My final point is, is we're talking about towers and you meant, yes, that's a large number. It's a large number, especially as we look at our roads and we look at our sewer and we look at our water, all our kind of basic necessities of our community are also failing. But maybe come back with a staggered approach. Can we address two a year or four a year and what maybe that cost looks like?
Well, I would kiss it, I would kick it back to you. Sheridan Alpine Association stands ready to help the city, but we're not a department of the city.
Absolutely.
And we're basically a contractor, so if I remember right, it would be under Parks and Rec and we'd certainly be happy to work with Duncan to, to help him come up with that project, you know, project scope or whatever. But really, and, and this was something that I didn't completely understand when I was, when I served on council. I served on council for eight years and I didn't quite really understand the relationship between the city and Sheridan Alpine Association. Mostly my fault because I didn't understand and, and didn't really dive into it as deeply as I, as I should have. But yeah, it's, it's city infrastructure and the city is hiring a contractor to basically turn it and, and turn the chairlift safety safely. We're happy to help, but we're certainly not project managers or anything like that, but, but we do stand ready to help as best we can.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else? Councilor Mike Carpenter?
Thanks.
So you said the towers have some rust. Have they been evaluated or, I mean?
Annual, yes.
Yes, so you have annual inspections?
Interrupt you, but yes, annual inspections, and that's something that the city's budget does help us with.
Yeah, we're required to have an annual inspection from the state, and we have an inspector come. And he does a brake test to make sure we can stop the thing within a certain distance and examines the cable and makes sure we have the correct signs of, and the condition of the motor room, which has the electric hydraulic drive motor, the condition of the bull wheel and the counterbalance. These are all the things that we were red flagged. This was why we were red flagged on the cable. We had one more year on the cable and we took that year. And so if we hadn't replaced the cable, we would have been shut down by our inspector.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I should have guessed that you had annual inspections, but I wasn't sure. So is Sheridan Alpine kind of setting anything aside to, like building a savings account to help? Because obviously it's going to take grant funds. I mean, we don't have $450,000 sitting around.
Sure you do.
So I'm wondering if you all are, if there's any kind of squirreling away as you go, I mean, or maybe there's a way to do a partnership. I mean, I think that's partly what council member Kinsman, I don't know what words in your mouth, but I mean, I think, you know, when I hear you say you're a contractor and not, I don't, I mean, we don't pay you to run it.
Right.
I mean, we pay some of the costs of doing it, but you're a volunteer board and you guys are, you have a nonprofit association and well, it's not a 501(c)(3).
It's a C4.
It's a C4, right? Right. So are you, are you doing anything to change it over to a C3 so you can get grant money?
We're looking at, we're looking at that. It's been highlighted that a C3 can gain access to a lot more grants than a C4 can. With our original filing with the IRS, their determination was that we fit in the C4. One of the things that were, that a lot of interest has been expressed is to start up a ski school, a little bit more formal of a ski school. That came from a lot of the parents this last year. We did a little bit this year and we're actually exploring that. That would give us the educational component that a C3 determination would need. So we're looking at that, we're exploring it. I can't really say we're ready to, the association's ready to move in that direction, but we certainly are. Back to your original comment, just like the cable replacement project, we are squirreling away small amounts of money for things that kind of come up. There's a tremendous amount of membership. I guess maybe I moved too quickly on that one. It was 456 members. Of that, 425 are season pass holders. And if I remember, our wintertime population in Cordova is about 800. And I think if you can get about 600 to vote, 456 is a pretty good majority of the interested parties. So we have interest from our members, and that's represented on our board, to put some money aside because they don't want to see this go down for something that we could help fund for maintenance. And so, but we don't have a lot, I mean, we don't have deep pockets either. So the chairlift maintenance project, that took about 10 years to kind of save up, or the rope tow, or not the rope tow.
For the cable.
For the cable. Took about 10 years to get, to, you know, to get $50,000 that we could contribute. So, yeah, it's
I'm just thinking, like, if you go to Rasmussen Foundation, you know, they do bricks and mortar type things. I think this is something they might be interested in, but they're going to want to see a local match.
Right.
And the Recreation Trails Grant Program that the state DNR operates, I think has an 80/20 match.
Right.
Maybe it's changed. So I'm just saying, we can start to talk about
I think we need to partner.
Yeah.
Because I, and, you know, I've talked to the city manager and Ms. Sherman, and I think we need to partnership because the association doesn't own it. It's City of Cordova Infrastructure.
Right.
So somehow we need to kind of connect the dots, and we're happy to kind of help do that.
Well, we're happy to connect with you and help you get some grant money because we're just not going to be able to all come from us. And like council member Kinsman said, if we can do it over time, that's great.
Right.
Yeah. But obviously it's more cost effective if you could do it at once because you're mobilizing a crew and you have to set tents around the towers and all that jazz.
Right.
Or people with hazmat because of certain kinds of paint, yeah. But yeah, anything we can do to, I guess I would encourage you to look hard at turning over into a 501(c)(3), and I think the Fordrick Group can help with that. They have an attorney on staff. I know he's helping another entity in town get nonprofit status with the IRS.
Right. Yeah, we're happy to, happy to look at that. For me personally, I'm trying to connect the dots because it's city equipment.
I mean, I
And so it would be, so it would be
Well, the dot is, it could take longer, so
No, 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 I'm trying to connect the dots. So it would be a 501(c)(3) donating to the city, funds to
Or supporting a community recreation facility.
Can I make a comment that Eagle Crest is nonprofit in partnership with the city of Juneau. Ski Talk is a nonprofit partnership with the city of Palmer, so there are examples of that. They're both, 501(c)(3)'s in each of them establish rules and access to funding that will allow them to benefit all in a bigger way. So I hear that it is city infrastructure and there are opportunities to kind of carve out and identify things that each of us, the city and Sheridan Alpine Association, could potentially apply for funding if your organization was a C3. And it may be that it wants to continue to be an association, but maybe a separate 501(c)(3) that would allow access to those resources might be something to pursue. I know I'm happy to, I know Kathy, we had a conversation with some board members last year. Both of us are happy. And then as Kristin said, the Fordrick Group is definitely there. I think it's a missed opportunity if we don't go that route at some point because it would certainly allow us to get access to more funding at each of those resorts. I know when I was at the Rasmussen Foundation, we funded Alpenglow, we funded Eagle Crest, and so there are ways to navigate that to allow your organization to be the organization you want it to be, but also provide access. And the city ownership with a nonprofit operator also allows for both of those to tap funding. So I think it's something we can do.
Yeah, I definitely want to give the impression that we're very interested in helping the city and helping connect those dots. Maybe it goes back to the agreement, maybe a partnership agreement. We need to maybe start there.
I just don't see it happening all at once. It's going to take funding from a bunch of different sources, I think.
Sure.
Yeah. The only reason I'm advocating for it.
Very good.
Councilmember Shaffer?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. In wrapping my brain around the $450,000 for the towers, just wondering when the tower is the last painted? Basically, like how long does this, does the coat of paint last? And then how many towers are there?
There are 18 towers.
18 towers? And yeah, what's the lifespan of the paint?
I think 10 years. I think 10 years ago they were painted. So it's sort of like a steel boat. You had to be baited on.
I mean, that depends on the coating, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, they might make it last longer, but you know, it might be $600,000.
And then my other question was, in talking about expanded opportunities, so summer lift opportunities, is there any potential for expanding hours, like with lights and night skiing?
Yeah, definitely a possibility, something to explore for sure.
Has there been anything looked into, like what that would cost to do lighting at night or that's a totally new project?
No, that I know of. I don't think there's been a feasibility study, but that's what I would start at.
We could do it. Our manager's attitude that he's expressed to me is that we have, you know, like at Alyeska and Anchorage, they have 300,000 people up the road. And so people who work in the day, they come down and they ski at night. But we have, with our limited population, we have a group of skiers who come out during the day and they're pretty well done at the end of the day. And so I don't think we'd get that many people at night because our skier population has already been used up, so to speak. But it's something to look at, for sure. Definitely, it's feasible. I mean, we could mount lights on the towers, there's no doubt about it.
If there's interest, I think, yeah, feasibility study would be the right place to go and maybe budget for that in your city budget.
Councilmember Dale?
Yeah, well, to me, it sounds like the starting point is a 501, is it 501(c)(3)?
(c)(3).
I think that's, that's where we should be starting from because we're like, we don't have the $400,000 or $800,000, whatever it's going to take. But we do have some funds in lower, later time, and I think council could get behind that if there's some cost of developing this or legal paperwork, staff time. But that's what I would support, going down that road, so it opens it up to some more grants and funding. And it just seems like the responsible way to go.
Okay. One comment. I just want to say, I'm not opposed to having the city spend money, I just don't see all of it coming from us. And so I, in terms of connecting the dots, I see, you know, if the city can incorporate some into its capital budget at some point and we can say to Rasmussen or the state DNR, we would like to match what you also can put in, yes, that I see as a possibility. But I don't see the entire amount coming out of our budget with the breadth of capital needs we have at this point.
Oh, yeah.
To see how we, yeah.
I can appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments for Ski Association? Ken, did you have any questions or comments for?
Uh, no. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate all your volunteer work, the mayor and the council. I know it's, you guys do an awful lot of work and you're a talented bunch of people and the city really appreciates what you do.
Thank you.
I'll write back at you with all those volunteer for the ski hill.
Yeah, exactly.
More on to the
Yeah. I didn't know that.
Okay, that takes us to all these comments regarding agenda items. Anybody have any comments on agenda items tonight? Come on up, state your name and address. Look at your life.
Sorry, couldn't see.
Sorry, can I just turn that off? Can you just close? Close it maybe? Thank you. Okay. I didn't want to interrupt you.
My name's Wendy Rainey, 2500 Orca Road. I just wanted to put a face to the name. I'm sure most of you know who I am. I did put in for council seat D to take Marina's space. Couple things, refer back to my letter. I did recently run for mayor with about half the votes, so I feel like the community has faith in me for that position, partially. And I feel that the next best route towards that end would be a council seat. Most of you are familiar with the number of boards and commissions that I've participated on in the past, and hopefully I've made it pretty obvious that my hopes are for what's best for Cordova. Try to regularly interact where I can and put forth the time and energy for that. I was able to get my husband to relent to a council seat that was a year, so I figure once I get my foot in the door, maybe he'll be easier to convince further on. So, but again, I just wanted to put my face with my letter and look forward to questions or anything else that you have later on this afternoon, this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? Hearing none, then we'll move along to chairpersons or representatives of boards or commissions. CCMC, anybody with CCMC here? School board? Alex, you want to?
Good evening, Alex Ruston, superintendent. So summer sessions are in full swing. We've had kids in classes for various summer school sessions and our food service, summer food service program is well underway as well. Some of you may have seen a note that I put out recently to the community regarding the state budget and so forth. We're looking at about a $400,000 deficit now with the governor's vetoes in reaching our needs for the district. And so the school board, as well as administration, has some heavy lifting to do, some heavy considerations around how to, how to take $400,000 worth of needs out of our budget. But they're definitely, you know, if we can't raise the revenue to fill that gap, there definitely will have to be some cuts. And, you know, programmatically, I think you've heard me speak before about really trying to maintain our staffing, but, you know, things that we'll need to consider are student activities, our food service program, staffing as well. So those are really the three big expenditures that we have in our budget. And, you know, the administration's going to have to make some tough recommendations to the board and the board's going to have to debate, again, how to, how to take out nearly $400,000, you know, for our budget. So that's what we're doing now, is kind of gearing up for those conversations. And, you know, time is short. We need to have our budget to the, to the state by the 15th of July. So I think in the next week or so, we're going to be talking about how to balance that budget and move forward in the school year. I think that's about it. Happy to answer any questions or field anything if you have any, any questions or comments.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, how does the reduction in the VSA impact the equation for what the city can contribute to this wall?
Yeah, so when we were initially sort of looking at scenarios for potential base student allocation, what the city has committed to or has agreed to commit, that reduction still falls within like what's allowable by the city. So we took that into consideration as we were, again, kind of speculating on what the base student allocation increase could be.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alex? Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other boards and commission chairs out there? Hearing none, then we'll move along to the consent calendars before you.
I will take the role on the consent calendar. Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
And Kristin Carpenter?
Yes.
The consent calendar's booked.
Okay, I don't see, maybe here tonight, is she?
No.
But for the record, I would like to read proclamation into the, into the minutes, if I could do that, please. This is the City of Cordova, Alaska Proclamation of Appreciation to Marina Mimi Briggs. I, Mayor David Allison, do hereby issue this proclamation of appreciation to Mimi Briggs for her dedication and contributions to the betterment of the city of Cordova while serving as a volunteer and a City of Cordova employee. Whereas Mimi Briggs has been giving dedicated and engaged community members since arriving in Cordova in 1992. And whereas, early on, Mimi worked at the Chamber of Commerce organizing such events as the old time Fourth of July celebration, devoting many long hours to each event from setup to cleanup. And whereas in 1993, Mimi Briggs became coordinator of the very successful Cordova Shorebird Festival, elevating the annual gathering to include prominent international speakers and acclaimed artists. And whereas, Mimi, a native of Palm Springs and the California wine country, was well-versed in the ways of wine and introduced the very popular Wine on Wednesday event at the Alaskan Hotel and Bar, which she went on to oversee for more than 18 years. And whereas And whereas, Mimi Briggs became a volunteer bookkeeper for the Cordova Historical Society in 1997, and was awarded the prestigious Copper Spike Volunteer of the Year Award in 2000. And whereas, in 2015, with the opening of the Cordova Center, Mimi Briggs was instrumental in developing, marketing, and coordinating Cordova Center events, sometimes single-handedly setting up, running mics to speakers, moving podiums, always with a smile and lighthearted demeanor. Her proficiency was appreciated and often commended. And whereas, Mimi was an active Cordova Historical Society board member, then became museum assistant for the city. On her merits, she was promoted, and from 2019 to 2023, served as, served the city simultaneously as museum director and Cordova Center coordinator. And whereas, Mimi Briggs was, has promoted the history of our region, been an ambassador for the, for Cordova to the many visitors she greeted and developed museums store into strong financial support for the Cordova Historical Society. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor, city council members, city staff, and citizens of Cordova do hereby express their sincere appreciation to Mimi Briggs for her willingness to dedicate many hours of her time and service to the community as a valued volunteer and employee in roles with Historical Society, Chamber of Commerce as museum assistant, museum director, and Cordova Center coordinator. So we have a certificate for Mimi, and, uh, great work, Mimi did. Okay, that takes us to reports of officers, mayor's report. I think the only thing, a couple of things, I guess. We did the Fourth of July celebration with the chamber yesterday, well attended, I think. I don't know what the total was, but I think there was pretty good participation in that. It didn't rain on us, so it was all good. Tomorrow is the changing of the guard at the Coast Guard Cutter. 10:00 AM, I believe, at the Coast Guard dock, if anybody wants to come down and see that. And then they have a, uh, no host reception at the brewery. I believe it's from 12 to 2:30 or something like that. Anyway, after the event at the, at the Coast Guard dock, they're, they're opening up the brewery for midday drinks. And I did sign on to a letter that I will make sure gets distributed to you guys from mayors of all of the Prince William Sound communities. For calendar and associates put, put out the, the letters generically supporting hatcheries in Alaska. As we know, Pizwak is a, has been a great part of this community for, for a long time. And they, they put a letter out, I think it was sent to the anchors, Daily News, or something like that where they sent it. But anyway, I'll get that to the clerk and have that distributed to you all as well. So that's about all I have for now, any questions? Okay, moving on, city manager's report, Helen.
Um, in your packet are financials through 53123. We are now past the halfway mark of our calendar year, our fiscal year, and we'll be looking in earnest with every department head where they, where they stand with their budgets, where there are deficiencies, where there's need, if you will. And we are also very well along in migrating to the new software that you approved in the past couple months. We are planning a January 1 launch date for that. And in conjunction with that, we've identified that if we get some billing software, it'll make all the departments much more efficient, we'll integrate with the new program. And that resolution is before you tonight for consideration. Last week, we started IBEW negotiations, we spent three long, hard days with them. There will be an executive session tonight to give you an update on that and to get some feedback on how to proceed. And then I do want to share that, as you all know, the harbor is breaking ground in a few very short months. And one of the big projects has been and is, right now, relocating and finding place for all the boats in the South Harbor. And if Tony or Colin, is anybody here? So we do have some things going on this weekend, I just wanted to alert the public. Colin can share a status update, thank you.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, members of council. Well, Bronson, working with Tony back there, no. So, as Helen said, a big part of this project is the shuffling, the three-dimensional chess game that we're trying to play with the North Harbor and the South Harbor. So we've got some good progress, we've got some challenges, as I'm sure you can all understand, of moving 500-ish vessels into a spot that only has room for 250, and we don't have all those spots available, they're not the right spots, you know, it's not one size fits all. So we've come up with some creative solutions to free up some more spaces for deep draft vessels that, that can't haul out with trailer and need to stay in the water or highly desire due to live aboard, vessel not being able to be lifted in our travel lift for either their construction, meeting wood, or they're just too dang big. And then also folks with a commercial interest in keeping their vessel in the water during the construction period because they run a business, charters, SERV's vessels, fisheries, you name it. You got to make sure that we don't impact their livelihood as much as absolutely can. So we had a lottery two weeks ago to raffle off, to make it as fair as possible to everyone. And we were able to fill just a few slots, seven slots or so, and then also make space available in the shipyard. The nice thing about the shipyard is we do have a lot of room, so we're able to clear that list. Everybody, everybody got a chance at the shipyard. Well, fast forward, we put our heads together, figured out a better solution. We worked on it last week to see how feasible it is to pull some of the figure floats off of the entirety of A dock and the eastern portion of B dock. And we believe we have a workable solution to increase the slip count for 40 and 50-foot vessels that, that have to stay in the water. So that's a good thing. We're going to run that new lottery again with everybody in it, so everybody has a fair chance, so nobody missed out. We're going to do that this Friday at nine here, and we'll see what we come up with. In that time, we've had some meetings with folks from SERV's to fully understand their needs. Obviously, the service they provide is very important to, you know, Cordova and Prince William Sound. We want to make sure we can, we fully understand the coverage that they need and know that there will be some compromise in that. So we won't get everything we want, but we're going to free up some more spaces, and we've got a pretty good plan for that. The exact number or exact linear feet of dock space available is unknown at this time because when you start pulling those floats out, you know, can you put Humpty Dumpty back together again? Will you do more damage by pulling aging infrastructure out? We don't know, but we had a pretty good sample of what it takes. It's easy to pull them apart, we'll leave, it'll be easy to put them back together, but we won't know 100% until we start pulling those docks. But we have a good plan, and then we'll make a comprehensive list of everyone there, and we'll just start chipping away from one to, I think 46 or something is on our list right now. So we're trying to find a home for 46 vessels, so give or take a few. That's the three-dimensional chess game I spoke of. Otherwise harbor, design, acquisition, long lead time fabrication is going very, very well. We are, we got our 65%, which was actually much closer to 95%. It was a very comprehensive 65. We received it, our consultants received it, they replied back. So the contractor, Terngans, got all of our information on what we need to see. Our must haves are very easily answered. And then we should be on to 95% by the end of this month, so that's good. And that's like, 95% is like final engineer record, everybody signs off, it's good to go. And so that should be an easy one. We've got a lot of material already bought, a lot of pile already bought, a lot of docks already being built. We had a big metering challenge with the software hardware issue that we were able to overcome. So we're working on that with CEC to make sure that the metering billings, we don't have to have meter readers and things like that, and all the software is compatible, so we don't have a bunch of Band-Aids and, and, you know, temporary fixes. So that's a good thing, we were able to overcome that. The cost is far less than we initially thought. We have to talk to CEC about who pays for all of that. But, but it's a good thing, long-term, it's a much more stable platform and program certainly than what we have and what we initially thought we were going to get, so that's good. We're at about 10.5 million spent so far, the 39 and change that we have budgeted for the project. Still working on environmental permitting, it's slow, we know it's slow, but when you eat, sleep, and breathe it, it feels incredibly slow. So we're working on that with our environmental consultants. They don't seem to think that it's a major challenge, they just, it's just slow. Anytime you touch something, you have to comply with everything that's come since the last time you touched it. You know, in this case, it's years and years and years and years. As well with the core and making sure that we're not infringing on navigation lanes, even though to the casual observer, there's virtually no change to the footprint. It's all going to be same, but, but new material. We just have to make sure that we're not encroaching on any of those federally regulated waters that allow vessels to a traffic or whatever we say it is. So, so it's slow on the fed side, but we are making progress. And like I said, it's about 10 and a half million, and from a design perspective and construction, we're in a very good place. So the big, the big challenges coming that are most germane to the city, I think, are the construction itself, the moving of the boats, the construction itself, closures that we will inevitably have on Nickeloff just so that they can do the utmost work, but we're going to communicate that out early and often to make sure that it doesn't jam up too many people for too long. But thankfully, it'll be past the busy season, so that's where we're at, and we're nine weeks away. Any other questions?
Okay, questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Thanks, Colin. Um, that's it. Proceed, manager.
Any questions for the city manager?
Thanks, I was just going to ask, and maybe this is another question for staff. There's a big barge anchored off the North Phil, is that the scrap metal collection?
Yes.
And how much of, how much of the pile are we going to get to go through?
Sam, do you want to give an update?
I mean, I'm excited to see that that's actually happening, so that's great news.
They're anticipating about 11 tons. Kind of depends on compaction rate and some of the things you can't compact. So it's, it's a little bit of another chess game, if you want to put it that way. They have a crusher on site at the landfill, so now they're cubing out cars and bringing them in, which is way more efficient for space. So I can't tell you for sure, but that's their guess. What that means in relation to the pile at the scrap, at the landfill, still unsure on that. But hopefully, we can continue, like, they'll crush, keep crushing and have bales ready to roll, even if they leave, whether they come back now or later.
That was going to be my question, so they're taking one barge load this summer?
That's the commitment, is one barge load.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have a discussion after that, I imagine, after.
Do you want to talk, they're also taking some vessels out of the harbor?
Yeah, so we got a deal with them to backhaul, what's the name of that boat?
Old Lady to the landfill.
Bold Lady to landfill, we cut it up, so they're taking it out, which is super helpful. But you can't scrap metal that, it's fiberglass, so it goes in C and D. But they are going to cut up the steelhead and take it. So that's creating space for other boats to come in on the South Harbor project. So that was a great thing to happen. And if anybody else has any questions, I'll be driving back four through town.
One thing I forgot, can I ask Sam to prepare for this? You may have heard that there's been an oil spill, and I wanted Sam to give an update on where we stand with that because I just want to commend staff for being incredibly proactive, working very hard to get that cleaned up. And I'll go let her give an update.
Yeah, so I have a couple things. First, I want to also mention that Mike Garbitson retired. He's been a major, and I've never seen anybody work as hard as Mike Garbitson in the whole, whatever he's doing, it's all in. So he retired, heading on a road trip tomorrow. But if you guys see him when he gets back, congratulate him, he will be missed. His whole lot of information walked out the door on that June 30th, him and me both. And then, again, I would say the public works crew, the water crew, Aaron and the street crew, and even the refuse crew, who just kept cruising while Aaron was helping with all the street stuff. It was just amazing. When Paul came, when Colin came and Paul got there, the water crew already, and streets already had the tank. So the tank leaked, came through the containment. They, it, it was a water oil mix, just wasn't like a spuge of oil. But they had already stopped, they'd already fixed it, got it, pumped out the containment, everything. Paul's like, oh, no, I needed to be here, you guys got it. So they did an amazing job, I mean, their response time was incredible. So that happened on the 23rd, the first call, it was the morning of the 23rd. We dug out about 50 cubic yards that day, got boom down, got oil pads down. And then that weekend, we continued, the water sewer crew, they have the crew and the temporaries all weekend, worked through the weekend, removing pads, putting pads back, putting boom out, taking boom in. And then on Monday, we called an environmental consultant to help us figure out what to do. And we had a meeting with them on Monday, they came on Tuesday, we made a plan of attack. Tuesday morning, after Mason was on the ground to really see, you know, you can send a thousand pictures, this really never does justice for what's on the ground. So on Wednesday, we dug another, we dug Wednesday and Thursday, and we dug another. So we did 10 cubic yards, 50 cubic yards, and another 50 cubic yards on Thursday. I believe there's remnant oil in that ground because we used, the lake, the amount of oil in the lake is minimal compared to 110 cubic yards of water, watery oil that came out of a containment. So the, um, the Mason, the environmental person came, he tested the soil. That's back to the lab, it takes a while, we'll get a, a answer around the 19th of July. But when we dug the first day, they tested, it's still hot, as they call it, so that's why we dug again. We had the containment site at the lot, off the Copper River Highway that used to be next to Eagle. And once we get a read on what those samples are, and we're done digging, the lake looks great. We've been raking the beaches in order, so the beaches, some of the beaches have very small gravel. And when the, it occurred and the oil moved down there, the wind was blowing it in to the lake. And so then the, then the wind stopped, but the, you know, it was still on the rocks. So you rake it, get it back into the water, and get it absorbed back up. So we have boom all the way down the lake. We have boom, that hard boom to contain it where it actually went over the edge and into the lake. There's still some soil there that we're still raking and seeing a little bit of sheen coming out of there. Every day we're raking, so from now through next week, we'll rake the beach, beaches, every day, once a day. Flip pads, replace plads, and also boom if they need to be. And then we're going to reevaluate on Monday, the 10th, to kind of see if we can pull some of the boom on the furthest areas because there's no more, nothing's getting down there anymore. And we'll just keep moving in that direction until we hear what to do with the soil, that'll be the next big thing.
The state has a plan, and this incident rises to the level where the state dictates exactly.
Anytime oil goes in water, you have to man, you have to contact the state, you have to be in communication apps, talk to DEC every day for the last 11 days, and to talk to DNR, talk to the Coast Guard. So we've done all the things, and this DEC approves our plan, and the environmental people will all work together to wrap it up. people will all work together to wrap it up.
I think one of the things that everything she's shared might raise as an alarm bell is this might have a cost associated with it, and indeed it does. Certainly wasn't budgeted. We've approached our insurance company, they don't cover spills. We are working with them on some alternatives, possibly, and because it's state mandated, there might be some wiggle room, but that's something that we're still actively pursuing. And in the meantime, I don't know, approximately, we're guessing in the 20, 25 to 30, maybe more, $1,000 range.
Well, right now, yeah, we have a $19,000 contract with the environmental company that includes all the testing, them here, them doing all of that kind of stuff, helping us with the plan once we get the soil sample back. And then, yeah, it's the soil disposal that's going to be the big, big one.
So I think there were a couple of things that this brought to mind is how fragile tanks really are and how we need to be very, very aware of the status of our tanks. So one of the things we've discussed with Paul is to go around every department and look at every tank and see what's holding it up, what the cribbing looks like, how the tanks look, and I think just so far, everyone's going, no, our tanks are old. So we will have a plan for you all to consider, but we did want to at least alert you to the fact that this is, is a problem that might get larger in terms of our need for response to mitigate this ever happening again, preventing it from happening again. And then there'll be a associated budget impact that was not planned, but these guys are on it, and we're doing everything that the state is asking us to probably, and more, and it will reduce any liability we might have further down the line, so it's a good thing. So thank you to everyone.
Yeah, thanks for all that information. For tanks, like for tanks that are in areas that are more sensitive, like near waterways, is it, should we look into secondary containment?
There was secondary containment.
Okay.
It rains a lot here. Secondary containment is a tough one when it rains so much. I did talk with Andy Craig, and he mentioned that he had seen valves that you can put in the containment that'll let water pass, but as soon as a petroleum product hits it, there's a chemical reaction and it solidifies. So we're looking, I'm looking for those, I think that would be super helpful. The other thing we did for the EAC water treatment plant tank is the end of containment, it had a roof, we were putting sides on it, but leaving the front open, you need to really have some air movement through there. But yeah, we'll be looking at all ours, maybe at double valve tanks, I don't know what the costs, I haven't really had a time to really sit down and think about all of that, but yeah. Yeah, I'm not, we don't want to do this game. I don't want to do this game. So we will definitely be looking into that stuff.
Do enclosed tanks seem like a roof and side wall seems like a good way to go, and then you can also get alarm arrays if the water level, water level comes up to a certain point in that containment. If we can keep the rain out of it, then you can have an alarm system.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, I don't know if you can keep the rain out of it, you know?
Yeah.
Like a little blow sideways here. But yeah, I mean, we had a roof, and that was super helpful, and so I think getting those sides covered is just one more thing, and maybe trying to angle it a little bit so it's not raining directly, yeah. You could get a float, what do you call that in the boat?
Yeah, I just want to even with this highlight, and I'm sure it's incredibly obvious right now, but as we look at spending money, it is important to do some preventative stuff over our reactive stuff, because this reactive bill is going to not be inexpensive, so. Once we're shipping soil out of here, that has a pretty heavy price tag. Thank you, thank you for your response, Sam.
Yeah, this is for the ski hill. So, so I imagine it's a city asset, they're contractors, so is it, is it coming upon us to maybe pursue this, the nonprofit situation, maybe we need to look at that, move that forward, and if there has to be whatever components they need, if there has been education component, then we kind of lay that out for the ski hill club and say, look, you need to get on this, we're going to move forward, because we've talked about this before, nothing's happened, so maybe we, city staff, needs to start moving this instead of kicking it down, down the road.
Certainly, the contract, the city can identify what the criteria are for contracts, so if you wanted to say we will only contract with a 501(c)(3) organization that in and of itself would disqualify certain entities. We can, I, I got the sense from the shared, I shared in Alpine Association, a lot of times, it's, it's about what we've always done. This is what we've always done, and, and it may be time to just take a new look, because there are plenty of models out there where a city owns the asset and a nonprofit organization owns the operations, and both of them are fundable. And, and it does take time to, to transfer to a c3, because the IRS sticks forever, but you got to get, get the paperwork started and/or create a new c3.
I was just going to say, I, I'm happy to volunteer with the Alpine Association, because we did do 501(c)(3) for the Friends of the Library, and I have been, I actually negotiated the original contract that's in effect now with them. So I have a knowledge bank on that, so I'm willing to volunteer and help them and get this moving, because that's exactly what they need to do, and that's what we did with Cordova Center, having 501(c)(3)'s, you just, it opens the whole door, so.
I have to stay on that, but yeah, going back to the agreement is probably a good place to start. I know Dave mentioned that as well.
I think the agreement expires.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah. So it's, it's still a few years down the line, it doesn't mean we couldn't open negotiations early, but it might take.
An opportunity to say, in the next, in 2026, this is what we're going to expect, and give them two years to figure out that status.
The educational component, just so you know, that isn't broadly defined terms, so it doesn't mean you have to teach lessons, like any, you know, a symphony orchestra qualifies. Nonprofit organizations don't have to have a specific, we've taught five students, it's, it's the most broadly based definition of education that possibly could be.
Well, and you can do recreation for public benefit, right? For me, I mean, that's another, that's another, is the word, criteria for being an IRS-recognized charitable organization, so.
And to go along with that, I think there's, yes, there's the minimum qualifying amount, but we also need to look at what does our community need, and I can tell you, our community could benefit from ski, whatever that looks like, some ski education in our community.
Any other questions, the manager? Okay, moving on then to the city clerk's report.
Just had worked a lot on a couple of items that are in front of you tonight, the, drug up a lot of history on other times that we've had to elect council members, and gave you guys lots of examples of how that was done. And then also helped put together that resolution, which was last minute, because the ferry didn't give us enough time to comment, you know, if we had waited till our next meeting, it was really a short timeframe, so Kristen came in and asked if we'd put a resolution, so we worked on that together, kind of last minute. That's about it, otherwise, just did the normal stuff.
Okay, any questions for the clerk? And then we've got our correspondents listed before you. Questions on any of that, comments? And we'll move on to, yes.
I'm just getting ready.
Oh, okay.
I'm finding page, because we've got to skip a few here.
It's on 98.
There's 98 in our packet. Okay. So this is the council election to fill the vacant city council seat deep, and the rules are pretty, pretty wide open. We have five, five people who've put in their names, and it's up to council to, to make that appointment, so we're either open it up for nominations, or what's council want to do, council member Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Wendy Rannie to fill council CD. Second?
Okay, any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mark Frohneffel.
Second, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Clerk, did you have?
We can also do this open ballot, or we can do a secret ballot, write it on paper?
Well, I had prepared in case everybody was nominated, but if we do two, you can do it out loud, or, or I can hand out pieces of paper and people can just write a name, and then I can just tell you the tally, and as long as somebody gets four, they're elected. If they don't get four, we can go back out to nominations and start over again, or council can choose what to do next. So if we're, it's up to you all, if, if we're having just the two, I can hand out papers, so go ahead.
Uh, to member chairman?
What, I, did you say Mark Frohneffel?
Yeah.
Okay, and did he express an interest?
Yeah, it's.
I sent you the, all the letters.
Did they, did they, here at noon, did they, did they, I mean?
I must have placed that.
And then there was a last minute one, too, today.
Yeah, I got that one.
And to be, to be technical, you, they would have to have a letter, and we can nominate anybody, they would have to meet the criteria to serve.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I.
And member sailor, you have?
I guess I just, yeah, the process, because they're all, all of them are qualified, I just, maybe I'm.
You gave me this, I'm sorry.
We're just going to nominate vote, or we're going to have a discussion why we think they would fill the position, or how does this go?
That's how we want it to go.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you know, grabbing at the mayor, I'm asking all of you, is because like, there are some points, I guess, you know, you brought up that you had 400 votes in the last election, that's a pretty strong abortion from the community. Are we going to discuss that, or are we just going to vote, and we go, all right, you're in? I guess, I don't want to sit here and debate anybody's, we're not paying care for the qualifications and where they've been, and I think people, you know, they say, well, why didn't you vote for me? Well, perhaps this one, again, I guess, I'm looking at the one candidate that had 402 votes in the last election, that's a pretty strong statement from the community, so it's hard to, I think if any other of these, any other of these candidates had 400 votes and they didn't get elected, they'd be asking me like, what, you know, what's, what's up? So it's a great choices, but I guess that's what I'm looking at. And I just want the people to know that they're in there, this is why I think I'm going to vote for a particular person that already had the backing of the community in the last election.
Yeah, I think, again, I don't get to decide, you guys decide, but I think it's, to, to avoid hard feelings in the first place, I think it's, it's better to do a secret ballot and, and get four that way, because whoever gets four or five votes, you know, there's going to be one or two not voting for them, and then that person sitting at their table, and then I can just see, you know, well, you didn't vote for me, I'm not going to support you, or whatever. Anyway, I just think it avoids conflict that way, but that's up to you guys.
I'm just thinking, it seems like we would have to vote in rounds until we get a candidate that gets four votes.
Maybe, it depends on if somebody gets four the first time.
That's what I mean, like, yes, I just meant, I don't think we can vote on two people simultaneously, like, we have to vote on one person, see how that vote goes, then vote, vote no.
Well, we, the one other example that I gave, only two were nominated, so we happened to have done it out loud that time, but you don't have to, and Mayor Allison, I think I'm going to ask Ken to text you, and you can write it down for him, and just write his name on it or whatever.
Okay.
I think that might work, to do it, if you guys are only doing the two, if it gets more than that, it's tough.
Cross out the extra names on there, because only two have been nominated.
Oh, is that how you want to do it?
Well, I don't know.
I can, you can just use the backside and write the name.
Okay, or it doesn't matter.
Or we just acknowledge that those are the two people we're, I mean, we can still use that ballot that she.
Okay, that's true, you can use, since I made it and cut them.
We'll use them, Susan.
I had to cut them twice.
That's about Susan.
Do we want to discuss, anybody else want to put in, convince for anybody, or?
Well, I just, again, on the process, I've served on other boards, utility boards, and this has come up before, and we actually went back, the election was, we had multiple candidates, and we actually went back to the election, and like, if there was three candidates, we took the next person that had the most votes, and that, if they wanted the position. Again, we have felt the unfair that if you're putting yourself out there for public election, and now it's not like you got two votes, but if you got half the votes.
Ken, are you okay with texting your?
I just said different, there's some.
Okay, to, to the mayor? It's the motion?
Yeah, yeah, you can make that work. I guess one comment I would have, I thought there was only like 300 votes passed in the last election, I mean, are you talking about two years ago election?
It was 2022, the mayoral election in '22.
Yeah, there was 800 and something, I think it was 416 to 418 or something.
15 to 17.
415 to 417. Give or take a vote.
Right, but, you know, in the, in the previous election, that could have been run for.
So you go ahead and text me who you want, Ken, we'll do a count and see where we're at. Yes. It's going to take two, two minutes to have this up.
Should be six, right?
Yeah.
We didn't recess, did we? Not really, okay. It, it's four to two Wendy Rannie, and then Mark Frohneffel got two, so that would make her duly elected to fill the seat.
I did actually read the packet, so if you want.
Congratulations. We got to swear you in, do you have a swearing?
Uh, no, that would have been something to prepare.
We'll swear you in, and, and you can join us at the table.
She's signed so many of those oaths in there.
Well, while, while she's getting that, I'd just like to say, appreciate all the people that did put in their names for, for this, and, and I would hope that some of them will be on the ballot next March, there will be another election, or, you know, if it happens that somebody gets off before then, the seat opens up, it was good to see the interest in the, and certainly, like, I think council member Baker alluded to it, they were all qualified to, to do the job, and look forward to, will Wendy join us at the table? She's got to swear at you first. She's got to swear at you first. Anybody else need a couple of members?
There's.
There's this one.
Oh, yeah.
This one has a packet.
Casey, you've got enough numbers here, buddy.
I like it. I think it's a good, good thing, aren't you? My wife will be very happy.
Soccer miles could always be council.
Right.
Hey, soccer started tonight.
We've got soccer on, too. I was there.
Soccer, yeah?
Soccer did start tonight, yeah. Well, you know, everybody, between the park and the.
Yeah, dog walk?
Yeah.
There are so many kids, it's awesome.
There was, there was a lot of cars there, for sure.
Is it like a league thing? Or is it big enough kids for teams?
There's little, middle, and bigs. I think it goes up through sixth grade is the biggest.
So, just kind of pick up?
They play, they play an hour a day, twice a week. And the first half hour is skills, and the second half hour is its games.
Just through the school, or after school?
No, I'm sure that.
They showed it last year. This one is not hard on kids.
You call this song?
In the swearing in?
Yes, yeah, we're all good. Sorry about that.
Okay, welcome to the table, Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so that takes us to ordinances and resolutions, number 15 on our agenda. Orders 1208, an ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a 20-year lease with the United States Forest Service, USFS, for a portion of property described as a roughly 4,500 square foot portion of block three, block seven, A, Tidewater Development Park. First reading, uh, it's back to first reading. Reminder to everybody, so this will come back to a public hearing and a second reading, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to go down ordinance 1207.
Second.
Eight.
Eight. Oh, eight.
Where does it say seven?
On the.
On the ordinance.
Jeez, are you kidding me?
Thirty-four says a, page thirty-one.
Page thirty-one.
Thirty-one, six.
All right.
Way back.
Four times.
Okay, it's 1208, yeah.
Okay, ordinance, okay, so I moved it up, ordinance 1208.
Sorry.
Okay, who, who got the second in there?
Kristen.
Okay, councilmember Shaffer.
Thank you. Um, we had a really productive meeting with the harbor commission today at noon, and I think they were able to just express their concerns and where they were at with the, with the lease agreement. And that was really just helpful to get their perspective on it. We've talked about this a lot. Um, you know, it really comes down to it's a 16-month agreement, and we don't have to renew it for 20 years. So, I am in support with that 16th month clause in there. So, I am, yeah, I'll be delighted to approve this, this lease agreement.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Thank you. Yeah, I just echoing what councilmember Shaffer said. It was a great meeting. It was great to have the harbor commission at the table with us. I do want to make sure that people, that we, um, want to reinforce the message, that we, there was a lot of discussion around the float plane dock and the net mending float. And I want to reinforce the message that we are looking for solutions that include a net mending structure, whatever it looks like, in the harbor when the North Harbor gets renovated. And, um, yeah, I think that's the point I want to make.
Councilmember Kinsman.
Yeah, and I just want to speak as someone who spoke against it last time. So, it was a very, very productive meeting with the harbor. And that was, that's really what I needed. I needed to talk and, and hear from them, and be able to ask them questions. And one of those questions was to make sure that everyone on the harbor commission had full confidence that this piece of the harbor wouldn't hold up future development in this, with, with the Forest Service lease being there. And so, I, I didn't hear any, anything against that, and everyone seemed in favor of that. And that our harbor commission has the tools that they need to utilize that north space of, of the harbor. So, now I'll be voting for it.
Thank you, councilmember Sherman.
I'm just going to echo everybody else's comments. I think that was exactly what we needed, and I hope in the future we'll have other meetings with the harbor commission. It was very productive, and I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Okay, councilmember Rainey.
Um, I did attend the noon meeting, but I have been researching this. I think Kevin went, hit it out of the park negotiating a 16-month clause that you don't ever get to negotiate with a government agency. And I think that's the key, it's a 16-month clause. So, I'd be in favor of whatever terms you're going to put here lengthwise, as long as the clause is available.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
I am not for that, so I'll be voting.
Councilmember Baylor.
Yeah, I guess I echo all the positive comments. And I also, I heard some more information that the harbor meeting was good. It was good to hear from staff. I heard a little morning story on how this was developed. And I think the city planner did a great job in, in bringing this home, and as well as the city manager. So, there's a lot of behind the scenes things that we didn't realize. And I think they, they did a great job with this, uh, this contract. So, I'm all in favor of it.
Okay, second time, anybody want to say anything else? Okay, can we do a voice vote then? All in favor of ordinance 1208, say hi?
Hi.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, that was first reading. This will come up at our next meeting for a public hearing and a second reading.
Correct.
Okay. Resolution 072325, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to negotiate with Starnik Inc. for a one-year renewable $18,900 contract for government cloud-based billing software, and authorizing one-time implementation and transition costs not to exceed $15,900. So.
Second.
Councilmember Baylor. I would love to hear from staff on this. Okay, Ellen.
Thank you. As you all know, we have been struggling for a number of years with our existing software, which, um, has many, many limitations. Um, technology has changed, and now everything is cloud-based. A lot of things are cloud-based, which allows real-time interaction with the software, allows customer access to the, to their accounts online, a lot of different things. And so, as we were working with NetSuite, which is the company which is going to be doing our general accounting program, and we're looking at our existing billing software, which quite frankly is sort of a Frankenstein approach. Every department has their own billing software. We realized that it probably would be worthwhile to take a serious look at those opportunities to get cloud-based billing software that would integrate with the NetSuite product and allow us to have better customer service, have real-time access, and a fully integrated system that allows us to track receipts and where people stand. So, this is a solution that was recommended. We, we went out and researched a lot. We had demonstrations, staff had demonstrations, and we all agreed that this, this system was very robust, and it would be something that would serve our needs for a number of years into the future. And it's, it integrates with the NetSuite. So, um, we're recommending. It's, it's a one-year contract. It's a renewable contract. Obviously, if we make a $15,000 and change investment in the setup, we probably would want to amortize that out of a longer period. We have that opportunity, but at this moment in time, it's a renewable contract. And gives us an opportunity to see how it flows and feels. But again, we've well researched it and seen a reason to believe that this won't be a solution that will carry us forward well into the future. It will provide you guys with access and staff with access to up-to-date data that will allow us to make better decisions, so.
Okay, councilmember Baylor. Yeah, well, it's, it's a little out of my league, the technology part, so I'll deal with everybody else. We were just saying. Councilmember Shaffer.
Um, what are we spending on billing, billing software annually across departments currently?
Um, I don't have a number, but I can provide it. But it is in this ballpark. It's not more, it's more.
So, what we're spending currently on billing, um, billing software is comparable to?
More than.
Annual, or it's more than the annual?
And I will say that, and I'm going to not look over my right shoulder at Tony, and, um, and the, um, anybody else who has billing software that is third-party. And we will have a slow integration of that, because they have all invested in their, their software programs. And we need to make sure everything makes sense. But this is a nod to the future. Again, I, I think a lot of the solutions that have been created for the city over time have been, I use the words, this word a lot, but I think it's very true, Frankenstein solutions. Where we find a need, we go out and find a very specific solution and bring it in. And another very specific solution. And pretty soon, we have a lot of very little solutions that are costing us a lot of money, and none of them talk to each other. And that's been a real problem on the finance side. So, we're looking to alleviate that problem and make everything more streamlined and transparent, and certainly provide a user interface for customers, because right now that isn't available to them.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving down my list then, councilmember Rainey.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Carpenter?
Hi, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Kinsman.
Yes, does, is this the system that I guess coincides with our, with the served Arctic Care 365?
Um, all of these will, yeah, so, um, the Arctic Care and all of those kind of underlying systems are operated through our contract with, I just spaced their name.
Arctic IT.
Arctic IT, yeah. There we go. Um, and all of these software systems layering on top are fully integratable into that. So, it's, it's distinctly different. It's a software to run our daily, our day-to-day, whereas the office is kind of the underlying architecture, if you will. But all of it integrates, and Arctic IT has reviewed these systems and, and has no issue and thinks they will be well-served.
And when I'm just looking at cost, maybe that was the tune of $135,000. And now we have this coming in. How many more layers, I guess, are going to be added for us to get the most out of this underlying server?
So, so there's the architecture, which is, I mean, any more, it's, it's almost like investing in a building. It's, it is the essential piece that we need to operate all of our, um, our departments with software. So, I, I don't expect, I mean, there's billing software, there's, um, the financial software, and then there's actual, there's other kinds of software, whether it's Microsoft Word, or Excel, or whatever else. So, those systems in the Arctic Care environment. And Arctic Care is part of Arctic IT's. There's their whole system to provide cybersecurity for the city. And so, we, in operating in the cloud, in operating with software of any kind, have to have cybersecurity that is pretty much rock solid. And that's what Arctic IT provides through their Arctic Care. So, it's, it's a total different thing. It provides the ability for us to use these softwares safely and without feeling like we're vulnerable to any kind of cyber attacks. So, I kind of view them differently, but I, I hear your question. And this is the architecture that we are developing going into the future. It's just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger, I'm sure.
More and more layers?
Yeah.
More, or more, and hopefully different costs? And at some point, what? Yeah?
Yeah.
Which cost? And where does that money come from? So, okay, thank you.
Our hope is that it's going to end up costing us less in terms of time. Like, right now, we're, we're spending a lot of money with third-party consultants trying to help us get our financial systems in place.
I guess what I would say is I'd like to see some direct correlations. Do we have this software? But it's also helped us by reducing these hours, or reducing this contractor that we use, or, you know, we have this, we paid for it, we approved it, but we've saved this. Or we've been in net zero, and that's fine. Some of these things, but it makes life easier, and, but it's still net zero, we're wondering.
Sure. Well, we can discuss it at budget time. We'll try to have that information for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Sherman.
Sure, so, I was just going to try and go back a little bit, historian, and we can't help it. So, Arctic IT is kind of like the parent, and then all the other software layers are on top. But I, I think this is great, because it's going to integrate all of the departments into one system and cloud-based. And when we had Arctic IT, and when the city was looking at going to Cassell, Arctic IT also proposed a cloud-based software at the time that was based by Microsoft, which we've, we had moved into that, we would not be sitting here having this discussion right now. So, Helen's doing what should have been done ages ago. And it's great, because I think it's going to provide better customer service to all our community. I was going to ask, will this lend the ability to do all credit card payments? Like, for your harbor bill?
See, the, this particular system, you have your account, you'll have login. You can access all of your accounts totals that are paid. You can pay online. You can do any number of system online. And you can see in real time where you're at. Oh, my gosh, my electric bill is getting really high. Everyone's going to have to unplug their hair dryers or whatever. So, um, those are the kinds of things that will allow customers easier access to make their decisions about how they're consuming.
Great, so it will be like all the other entities in the community, yes. I'm going to vote Baylor this.
Councilmember Jones.
Uh, yeah, I'm for it.
Okay, anybody want to do the round two, or are we ready to vote? No, Casey asked all the questions I was going to ask. All right. Okay, it isn't required, but since this is a spend of money, I prefer to do a little poll.
Sure. On resolution 72325, Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Ann Chaffer.
Yes.
Ken Jones.
Yep.
Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Seventeen, resolution 072326, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, requesting changes to the 2023-24 proposed AMHS fall-winter period schedule by eliminating the two-month service gap in Prince William Sound slated for October 15th through December 14th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Uh, yeah, I really appreciate, uh, councilmember Carpenter for, and the city members together. And I am in support of the resolution. It seems like every year it's the same thing. So, here we go again.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Yeah, I, um, just like councilmember Shaffer said, we keep getting very short notice for a season that's coming up really fast. They are telling us that we're not getting any service. And it just, when I looked at the schedule, I realized that we were the only community, the only region being asked to go without service for a big chunk of time. I thought, why? Why is that? So, um, yeah, I would like to see us push that. So, yeah, I looked at CS, pushed back a little bit and asked them to look a little bit harder. I did realize, I did talk to Carrie Strout a little bit, and I was trying to look at, like, what other vessels, how could they move stuff around? Things like the Latuyas too small, that wouldn't work for crossing Prince William Sound. The Taslyna and the Hubbard, I think both need, I'm not positive, I think she said that they, but we could ask. I thought that she said they needed an extra fender to be able to tie up, but I don't know why one of them couldn't tie up at the dock the way it is now. It's a Aurora and an Alaska class ferry are in town at the same time. They, Alaska class ferry couldn't tie up because the fender, it needs one more dolphin, fixed dolphin out in front. But I'm not sure why that one couldn't tie up as a side berth configuration at this point, so we could ask about that. But, yeah, I would like to see them do a little thinking about how to, how to spread the load, I guess, or how to spread the pain, basically.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yep, it would be nice if they listened.
Councilmember Vader?
Yeah, I support it.
Councilmember Sherman?
Yes, I'm in support, too. It's like you said earlier, I think they just like to hear Cordova, because we're so good at making our argument.
Councilmember Kinsman?
No, I appreciate the work that went into this, but, yeah, I'll support it.
Councilmember Rainey?
I definitely support it, but they do ask for comments, like, early April on this. Did we have this, did the city attend that meeting? It was like April or May where they asked for input. I know the school board went to that meeting and put in the sports schedule, but did the city, did the city have a representative at that meeting?
Are you talking about, was that an APMON meeting, Highway Operations Board?
I know it was like, it was a comment, it was a comment session, because I know the school board attended with their sports schedule. But I just think in the future, you know, anytime there's an opening and a comment, because we do regularly get cut, you know, we need to make sure that we're represented for the city as well as the school district, just because of how we end up with the loss if we're not loud like we usually are. So, but I am in favor of this, and I do appreciate the work that went into drafting this. But I think we missed an opportunity if we didn't put in an early vote in that first meeting before they established the schedule.
There is a public hearing next week.
Next week, yeah, since the schedule came out, there's been public hearings. Another was an opportunity before the schedule was put in place to put input in, and I just think that's something we need to watch closely for and make sure we're loud at that meeting as well.
I think that they have a quota of comments that they need every time they put this out, so they cut us so that, because they know they'll get a bunch of letters from us. So let's give them their letters that they need to have.
I wanted to ask folks, if we're telling them the gap that they've proposed isn't working, is there another time, like, I don't want to see a gap at all, but would something, and it's nice to have ferry service for the ice worm festival, but if we had to have a gap, would it be better to have it, like, right after ice worm two, sometime in March, so that we had service in the fall, so the school groups could be traveling? Or is, I mean, there's no great time, I understand that, but just trying to think about.
School travels then, too?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, there isn't a good time.
Right.
But there's certainly, certainly other options that they can take a look at to run.
Maybe an opportunity to partner with the school as well, if, really, if that's how we're going to be a good partner of this and come up with an alternative time, maybe that is working with the school and coming up with, of this month, but this month, we'll work for that. Seeing that that's what we're discussing, and they are a large user of the ferry outside of our peak seasons.
I would certainly encourage all community members to put an individual comment in. This will, you know, we'll put an official city comment, but certainly would encourage all community members to put in that written comment and, and those, you can either call in or go to the, go to the LIO and attend those public comment periods, which we will, we will do that, I will be doing that during that time period, but certainly encourage everybody to get their comments in. Anybody need another round?
Okay, all those in favor of resolution 072326, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimous. We have no unfinished business, so we've got new and miscellaneous business. We took care of number 18 already, so moves the song to the pending agenda, CIP list, calendar, elected officials list. What's on our next agenda? Are we having a second meeting in July?
I don't know. How do you guys feel?
I will be out of cell phone touch for a while. Anybody else be, what date is that?
I'll be uptown.
July 19th. I will not be here, but you can have it without me.
You will be?
Uptown.
Okay.
I'll be here.
What's the staff need for a second meeting?
I think we've kind of been clearing the agenda, so there's nothing pressing at this moment in time.
We could do that second reading of that ordinance at a special meeting, or we can wait, I mean, we've waited a long time already. We can wait until the first August meeting, that's up to you. I don't prefer to do second reading ordinances and public hearings at a special, because you feel like you're sneaking it by people, but this one's been around for a while.
If we're going to do that, I don't, I, again, I don't see a need to rush, rush this through two weeks ahead of time. We've spent three years on it already, so I don't think that's critical, but, so you want to, is it consensus to cancel the second meeting in July, and if we have a need for a special meeting, we will call that?
Yes.
Agreeable? Any objections?
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we will do. So first meeting of August, then.
You'll have quarterly reports in that one, I know, because normally they'd have been in the second July one. We'll have the second reading of this, and I'm sure other things will come up by then.
And we'll have a public hearing.
Public hearing as well.
Okay, anything else? Anybody who wants to, Schaefer?
Were we going to do another work session on the facility condition report? I think it'd be nice to do that before budget time. Yeah, we are, yes. And we were looking at August. Okay, agreeable to the group.
Okay. I kind of like almost every meeting bring this up, but hopefully we can, like, because summer's moving right along, just, I don't know, maybe even all the history behind this, but the code update for sales tax. I have on here for spring/summer, I know some, we need to look at something because everything is costing money, and I'm seeing a lot of conversation about how we're going to receive money for all our expenditures, so.
And that sales tax code will be, the attorney's completed that, and we're in review, and it'll be at the, since we're not doing a July meeting, it'll be in the August.
Okay, so that will be on the agenda?
Perfect, thank you.
Are we going to do that as a work session or an agenda item?
Probably a work session, so we'll, we'll figure out when Holly would be available or whoever from her staff to go over and explain how it meets, legally meets the needs of city and addresses the issues that have been coming up.
Okay, so we'll figure that out. I have that on the agenda. One more.
Yes.
Is there a need to stay on top of the ski hill issue as far as getting into a nonprofit? Do we need, I'd like to see something ready and some promises that this will move forward because it's been talked about before. Do we need to put a resolution or something forward to the ski hills, saying this is the direction we want to go? Work with us, how do we, how do we keep this on the forefront and make it happen?
Yes. In between, since we're going to have a gap, I'd be willing to work with the committee that they put together, and we could go over the current contract and then maybe look into some steps and report back maybe the second meeting, and obviously we have one or first meeting in September. But before budget, have something kind of concrete, I'd be willing to just do that.
Sound agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't even ski.
How did she get sucked into that?
It's the Sun Valley link. And we do have a great exhibit at the museum now.
Well, thank you, appreciate, appreciate your volunteer for that and pushing on that.
He's going to be gone, that's why I did.
Okay, anything else on the pending agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move along to audience participation on any items at all that you want to discuss, anybody have a name? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Sherman? And I'm just going by my list.
Okay. Luckily, I'm prepared. And I'm just going to cut down by what I had written down. The police had a great message on social media yesterday for the Fourth of July. I don't know if other people saw it, but whoever's doing those has great little sense of humor that goes around getting the point across, except fireworks still went off, but it was very well done, and like, kudos to the police department for trying to be proactive on some of that. And I'm not big on social media, but I thought that was really impressive. Kudos to the crews for the oil spill response, I saw them all in action out there. And also with the ski association, we've come a long way because I do remember when we negotiated this contract, I don't know, I don't know how, I think I was assistant city manager then, and nobody else wanted to deal with Paul Schwartz's part. And now he was sitting at the Castle table, so that was, we've come a long way with this partnership. I wanted to thank Susan for all the background on filling that seat because I had no idea how that works. And thank you to everyone who put their name in, and welcome to Wendy. And my secret is, once you're in for one term or one little bit, then your husband will say, oh, okay, and you can run again.
I have to read, read, we have to pronounce.
Yeah. And thanks to Kevin for just doing a bang-up job. You were great at the noon meeting today, and I appreciate all your work that you put in.
Councilmember Schaefer?
What Kathy said. Thanks to staff and everyone that's working on the harbor project, and then also the staff that was responding to the oil spill, and everyone else who are just keeping the wheels on the bus. And then also, yeah, thanks to everyone who threw their names in the hat for filling the council seat. It was exciting to see so many people interested. And congratulations to Mike and Mimi.
Councilmember Jones?
No comment.
Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I echo the previous comments, and I'll have to go back over the interview reports on the buildings, but I don't recall seeing any mention of aging fuel tanks. I'm not real impressed with what I've read so far, what we paid for, but that's the way it went down. There was a water line leak on a close to a piece of property that I have searched, five houses, it's a one-inch copper line going up this, you know, sort of, and it had a hole pitted right into it from electrolysis. That line's going to have to get replaced at some point, it's going to keep popping. And as I said, we've got five people on a one-inch line. So it's just another example of our infrastructure, where are we spending our money? Can we, can we give this group four million dollars and that group a million? No, we've, we've got issues that we're going to have to deal with down the line, so, yeah. And thanks to staff, they did a great job. Thank you everybody for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, thank you. First off, thanks for everyone for putting their name in the ring for the vacant council seat. That was exciting. And I believe there's two potentially open positions that are termed out, or term, come to term positions coming up in March, so hopefully some of those names will see again on the ballot. That'd be exciting. I do want to echo and piggyback off of Councilmember Baylor's comments about our infrastructure, what I kind of refer to as our essential services in our community, that I think is where we really need to be focusing as we're on the eve of budget cycle. There's a lot of fun and exciting things that we really want to participate in, but, I mean, really, our essential services are, I mean, they're the non-glamorous pieces that keep our community going, and that's, it's, it's not difficult to drive around our community, because you'll hit a pothole, and, and know that we're lacking, and if the pothole's on the surface, who knows what's underneath? So, thank you.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I would echo, all has been said already. I want to, I certainly thank the people who have from, or stood up to run for office. I think that everybody, anybody who does that is really putting themselves forward, and I appreciate that. And welcome to Wendy, and yes, congratulations to Mike and Mimi, and thanks very much to all the people who responded to the oil spill. That sounded like a lot of long hours and hard work. And I just want to remind people that Sam Jam is coming up in two Saturdays on the Alaska Sam Run, so lace up or come on out and volunteer and come out to hear some great music up at the ski hill. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And are those member, Councilmember Rainey?
Thank you, and thank you to council for your vote of faith in me. I appreciate that. I will try to do it justice as best as I can. Thanks to Mike Arbison and Mimi, they are both huge, huge sources of information that have now moved away from direct service, and I think we'll feel that going forward. I think that the meeting with the Harbor Commission was a huge benefit, and I think, especially before budget time, it would behoove the council to do that with other boards and commissions that are informational boards and commissions, like, especially the Parks, Park and Rec Department. I think a joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Department so you can understand some of the facilities and the challenges that are going on there, especially before budget time, might be beneficial. I really thought that was a good interaction between the council and the commission, so I'd like to see that with some of the other boards and commissions that are basically just an informative board. But I appreciate it, and thank you to everybody.
Okay, thank you. We do have an executive session tonight, so I had to entertain a motion to go into executive session to talk about the CPA agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that we go into executive session to consider matters of immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the government.
Particularly the collective bargaining agreement?
In particular, collective bargaining agreement.
Second, is the move to executive in discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? We move into executive session. And were we having that order?
Yes, I am now.
Okay, we're back in regular session. We used to have executive session to discuss the collective bargaining agreement, and no decisions were made, so.
We adjourn. If we go further business, we will be adjourned. How about that?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. It's nice.
Welcome.